Everyone on board, shall we begin?
I think we're all on board. Yeah, I think we're all in.
Okay, we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Okay. All right, so I think we, tonight, we need to excuse Gar and Claire.
Okay, I move that we excuse Gar and Claire from the meeting.
I second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we need any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No.
No. Okay, then we need to adopt tonight's agenda.
I move that we adopt tonight's agenda as presented.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we need to approve the minutes of the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes of the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one minutes.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on then to public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening?
Yes, just give me one second.
Sure, no worries.
My name is Elisa Moffett, and for those that don't know me, I'm a music teacher at the Claylum Roslin Elementary School. I'm a twenty-nine-year veteran, and I'm a product of the school system, attending school from kindergarten to my graduation in nineteen eighty-eight from Claylum Roslin High School. I was hired in nineteen ninety-three for the Title I reading position. I was beyond thrilled to be able to come home and give back to a community that had given me so much over the years, to my family as well. During my tenure, I've ridden the wave of amazing moments, such as district and state championships in both athletic and the academic realm, distinguished school recognition, students and staff being recognized for their amazing work, both in the classroom and outside. And I've also witnessed levy failures, air quality challenges, and now COVID. But during these times, we've always supported each other and celebrated the good with the bad, and always had a positive outlook regardless of the situation. Each year, I've always had a sense of hope, hope for our students to have the best year ever, and hope for the staff that they're always appreciated and recognized for the amazing work that they do. So again, this year, I had those same feelings, hopeful that we were back to a semi-normal school year, having students, all of students, five days a week, and knowing that this could be the best year ever, because we were all feeling grateful concerning what we had been through and what we have been through over the last eighteen months. I was also feeling optimistic that it was a negotiating year and that our team would be working with all of you to achieve an equitable contract for our staff, not only for their dedication to our profession, but for the amount of education that we all have. Now that feeling of optimism is fading as each week goes by, and we are faced yet with another contract cycle of not being compensated in a manner, in the same manner, as our peers within the county. My question to all of you is how are you going to attract and retain a quality teaching staff when higher compensation packages are offered by other districts within an hour radius of here? Oh, definitely, this is a desirable place to live, but my concern is, is that people will either look elsewhere in the beginning or they will start here and move on for a better compensation package, and we don't want to be a revolving door. We have approximately ten percent of our staff that is left in part because of this and more to follow. Morale is down, not because of our immediate supervisors, but because of our compensation package. I love this community. I love the people. They're near and dear to my heart. I love my job. How lucky for me to be teaching at a place that I grew up in and in the same classroom that my mother taught in. I believe maroon and gold, and my brother and I have always talked about this. I'm asking you to honor and value us, value the work that we do and our level of commitment so that we have shown you repeatedly. Honor our experience and our level of education so that we, and many others, want to stay here. Thank you for your time and consideration, school board.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name's Scott Malcolm. I'm Lisa's older brother. You might find that I end up echoing a lot of the things that Lisa brought up. I'd like to start by just letting you know a little bit about my family history. Nineteen seventy-two, my mother came into the house, she has four children, and she said, we're leaving Santa Ana, kids. We're moving to Roslin. Well, I didn't even know what Roslin was, where it was, or who would be going there. My uncle was a music professor at Central Washington University, came down to Los Angeles Airport. Right from the airport, he walked out onto the drive area and jumped into our station wagon, didn't say a word, and drove us to Roslin. And that's where things really began. And during that trip, I realized I'd be going home. That home has been for fifty years for my sister, my brother, and my older sister and I. We love this place. It is dear to our heart, and that's why I came back in nineteen eighty-nine as a volunteer coach and scout for the football team and started my career here and wanted to stay here the whole time. I understood that I wasn't being properly compensated as much as some of my peers in the valley. I understood that, but it was home. It didn't matter. It doesn't matter. And so years went by, and like Lisa said, we went through levy failures. And when you want to see people get together and really work together to try to make things better, those were not just our staff, but community members that wanted to make this place better through those periods of time. We watched children pay a hundred and fifty dollars to play sports. We saw a lot of things happen, and we made it work. And just like Lisa said, too, we've been through the air quality and now the pandemic. And we all have a difficult job. You guys especially do, too. But what we're asking is that we be valued more so than we have. I know you all appreciate us, but what we're asking is, in order for us, me, who I'm on my way out, I probably have four or five more years, to be compensated for what I believe I've earned, I'm more concerned about the younger staff, the people that I want to see stay around, the people I call friends, the people I call family. I'm in agreement, too, that this is the first time in my career that I've sat and thought about, where am I going to end up? I want to stay in Claylum. I want to be here. I want to be with the people I love and work with. I would not be leaving because of my immediate supervisor, and I definitely would not be leaving because of my colleagues. I value my peers. I value their professionalism, and I love the children. And I think if you get to the bottom line, that's what we're in this for. We're in it for the kids. But we also deserve to be respected and to be honored and be valued. I hope you guys can make the decision to help us with an equitable contract, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott.
Can you hear me? Great. Good evening. My name is Catherine Bell. I teach kindergarten at the Claylum Roslin Elementary School. I've been teaching here for the last two years. I'm very excited to start my third year here and feel privileged to work with such a fine staff in this amazing community. I've taught for the last thirty-two years. I feel that's very important for me to speak tonight concerning the integrity of our community, to explain this concern. I first want to give you a brief summary of my background so that you can better understand where I'm coming from with my thoughts. My husband, Robert, my son, and I recently moved here from Tacoma. We've been invested in this community for the past twenty years, before we moved here in the form of vacation property. Bob was born and raised in Tacoma. I've lived in Tacoma from nineteen seventy-eight to two thousand and nineteen. We've been married for thirty-two years, blah, blah, blah. I taught in South Kitsap and Tacoma area for twenty-three years. I chose to stay home and raise my child for seven. During the time I taught, the grades I taught ranged from kindergarten to seventh grade, including three years of developmentally delayed children, grades K through two. I've been the facilitator of committees each year that I've taught. I was on the Tacoma School District Math Committee, charge of a technology fundraising committee. And I'm saying this for a reason. I want to share some top involvement activities that I've been in part of, for an example, to support my statement tonight. I want to show you my commitment I put forth as a teacher. I'm speedily talking right now because I have three minutes. My commitment goes on and on. Upon leaving the Puget Sound area, I was awarded the honor of being recognized as the Teacher of the Year at Point Defiance Elementary School. Why? Because I'm invested in my profession and love with the privilege of teaching. I'm all about the kids and community, and I help my students to reach their maximum levels of potential. So why I report on my resume is that I like to quote, "No." I want to show you my commitment to those who are unaware of who I am. I want to show you what levels I will go to, to reach children and the community. I want you to know that I am willing to sacrifice for the betterment of my team. I am, and I always will be. With this in mind, I want to talk about the elephant in the room. I enjoyed listening to the school board's last meeting because I learned about the many awesome goals we have for the future of our kids here in Claylum. I've got forty seconds. After listening to all the awesome things our school district plans to do, not a word was mentioned about the very real situation that teachers are being faced with as we look into the renewing of our contract for the next three years. There was nothing said at the last school board meeting with the public about how our teachers are being offered a point-five, I do believe, pay increase for the next three years. This puts us at the lowest pay in our county, the lowest. This is the elephant in the room. We have an extremely high cost of living in this particular area. I've got nine seconds. And I've got a lot more to say, so. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Catherine.
Am I being started again? Wow.
Hello, everyone. I am Lisa Bronkema. I have had the pleasure of teaching in this district for almost fifteen years now. I'm starting my fifteenth year. And tonight, I am here reading a letter to you on behalf of Science Syria members. You will be receiving a copy of this letter if you have not received it already. Dear school board and Ms. Sibula, as we head into our second pandemic year, we know tensions and frustrations are high. We're aware that you have felt that, both as a board and a superintendent. It has been something we have acutely felt as teaching staff as well. In addition to the pandemic-related forces out of all of our control, the members of the Claylum Roslin Education Association have been dealing with an additional stressor that is out of our control, our compensation. Three years ago, the pay for teachers in Washington State became a locally controlled decision. As this decision was made at local levels, many of us watched with sadness and dismay as our friends and colleagues in our chosen profession received pay increases significantly larger than our own. Many of us began the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year with frustration, but chose to stick it out in this district. Why? Frustration because we believed that we were being paid as highly as our district could afford. Many of us chose to stick it out because we love our school and our community. We started the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year with those same concerns, compounded by a new year amid a pandemic. Now here we are in two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and as we've entered into our negotiation this fall, we have seen that our school district can do better. Currently, teachers in the Claylum Roslin School District make considerably less than our neighboring district. When comparing our district to the Ellensburg School District, as of two thousand twenty, our superintendent made approximately ninety-seven percent of the Ellensburg superintendent's pay. When you look at the comparison of teacher pay, we see a much wider gap. At the bottom of the pay scale, our beginning teachers make about ninety percent of Ellensburg teachers' pay. That is not as equitable as our superintendent's pay, but not considerably off. As you travel up the salary schedule and add in additional experience and education, both things we should be looking for in our Super SD staff, the gap widens. When looking at a teacher with a BA plus ninety credits and ten years' experience, disparity widens to eighty-six percent. When you travel up to an MA plus ninety with twenty years' experience, the gap tops out to eighty-five percent. That means that our top teachers are making over thirteen thousand dollars less than our cohort. I'm going to skip ahead to the end. Our disparity in pay is already creating significant problems for our district and will only increase if the same district are looking at additional pay increases this year. We are starting to see many teachers leave our district for districts that offer higher pay. Our entire country is facing a ticking, ticking shortage, while districts who cannot offer equitable pay are going to feel this considerably more than those who can. We are asking you, the board and superintendent, to do what you can to equal the playing field and make things right. If our superintendent is worth ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of our neighboring superintendent's salary, certainly our teachers deserve the same compensation. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mike Starkovich, and I'm a current resident of the Upper County. I grew up here and graduated from Claylum Roslin High School. And I'm fourth generation as a resident in this county. And my children are fifth generation, are also students in the school district. My wife is a teacher in the school district, and she has moved with me as I've moved around in my professional, looking for my professional opportunities in my occupation. And she's worked in several school districts in Eastern Washington over those years. Tonight, I'd like to talk about some research I've been doing. And if part of my duties in the federal government, I'm a professional hiring manager, and part of my job is for recruiting, training, and retaining a qualified professional workforce, and I've done so for more than twenty years. In the public agencies, we are now struggling to recruit and retain professional employees, particularly in Kitata County, as our cost of living and our real estate costs are very high here. Those cost of living prices and real estate prices are driving current employees away and are now becoming an insurmountable impediment to recruiting a new, younger professional workforce. I have jobs that range in salary from thirty-eight thousand dollars to forty-eight thousand dollars, which I now receive no candidates in order to hire and fill from. And when I talk to my counterparts in other areas, we're seeing the same trend as we've lost our cost of living buying power due to not getting cost of living adjustments that are adequate to what the cost of living is. This year, the current cost of living for August twenty twenty-one is five point three percent. The previous two months were at five point four percent. The last time we were at these levels was in two thousand eight, and we know how two thousand eight finished. We entered the Great Recession. My concern, as a taxpayer, of which I've been a taxpayer for more than twenty-five years in the school district, is that by not offering a fair cost of living and salary increase, we're going to lose the qualified workforce that has given us schools of excellence, and we'll have a difficult time recruiting a new set of certified teachers to continue to educate the children in this community. I hope you guys will consider that when you look at the best way to move forward from a financial aspect. And I really hope that you'll take into consideration the long hours that each teacher spends in a workday. I often see many teachers spending multiple hours after work, and they do so graciously, knowing that that's the best for the kids in the community. So I thank you for your time, and I hope you'll carefully consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Carrie, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I actually was not in line to speak. I'm not sure if I pushed the wrong button or something, but... So I don't have a prepared speech. I just... So I don't really want to waste everybody's time, but I just want to encourage the school board for you to really think about what our community members and our staff are asking. And I myself work in multiple buildings. I'm a reading specialist, TK through sixth grade now, and advise middle school and high school students as well that are struggling in reading. So I see the constant dedication across the buildings, the relationships that teachers have built with their students, and their countless hours when the day is supposed to be done at three-thirty. And many of our lights are on until sometimes after five. Same thing in the morning. I see many teachers there well before their contracted time, and it's because they're doing what is the best for their students. So I just really hope that you can consider making this a more equal playing field for us when we look at other districts around us. And truly, we have the best. We have the best teachers. We have the most dedicated teachers, and you can't, you cannot replace that warrior pride that we have for this community. Those that have been here, have grown up here. And for me, I've only been here eight years, but I have been embraced by the staff and community as well as a teacher and parent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that's it for public comments, Deanna.
Okay. All right, we'll move on then to information and discussion. First is three point A, three-one-one-two, social emotional climate. This is the second reading.
Did anyone have any questions or thoughts after our last reading?
No, it looks good to me.
Okay.
I agree. So we can move that then under action items, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So under, moving on to action items, we have the donation to Swift Water Learning from EDP Renewables in Kitata Valley Operations in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars.
Nice.
Very nice. Yes. We need to approve these individually, Michelle?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I move that we approve the donation from, to Swift Water Learning Center from EDP Renewables to Kitata Valley Operations.
I gratefully second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Then we'll move to four B, three-one-one-two, social emotional climate policy as read in the second reading.
Do we?
We need to move.
It has other stuff in it. Did we get a donation from Shoemaker?
That comes next.
Oh, okay. Mine's in a different where I must have uploaded it another time. Okay.
That's okay. I move that we approve three-one-one-two, social emotional climate policy.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we'll move on to the donations. Donation from Shoemaker Foundation for a Plus Optics Vision Screener in the amount of six thousand seven hundred sixty dollars and eighty cents. And a donation from Shoemaker Foundation for the summer enrichment programs. Very generous.
I move that we accept those very generous donations from Shoemaker.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much, yes.
Yeah.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Under personnel, we have the hirings. Jeanette Elliott, COVID-nineteen liaison. Jennifer Root, COVID-nineteen liaison. Resignations, Laura Hanson, resignation effective December twentieth, two thousand twenty-one.
I move that we accept those hirings and resignations as presented.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll move on to fiscal.
All right, I think we have Elizabeth coming on.
Can everyone hear me?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to start with enrollment tonight. We, for September, we have eight hundred seventy-seven point one-four for enrollment, which is up about, I believe, forty-four from June when we ended last year.
Wow.
And then on to our budget status. We have, in the general fund, our fund balance is three million one eight hundred fifty-six thousand sixty-three dollars and eighty-three cents. Capital Projects Fund, we have two million nine hundred seventy-eight thousand six dollars and eighteen cents. In the debt service fund, we have eighteen thousand five hundred eighteen dollars and thirty-five cents. In ASB, we have a hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred five dollars and ninety-two cents. cents. And in the Transportation Vehicle Fund, we now have a hundred and forty-five thousand six hundred eighty dollars and thirty-seven cents. And then our accounts payable for this month, we actually, for payroll, we have the August and September payrolls on the, the payroll sheet for one million seven hundred eighty-six thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. General Fund AP was six hundred ten thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars and forty cents. ASB was six thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. And Capital Projects was two thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. For a total, accounts payable for the month, two million four hundred six thousand two hundred seventeen dollars and seventy-six cents. And that is the fiscal report.
Elizabeth, I have a question.
Yes.
I, I should know this. Sorry. At what enrollment did you budget?
Um, I budgeted at, I believe it was eight sixty-two.
Okay.
So below what we, below what we have right now. Yep.
Okay. All right.
I went way more conservative this year.
Awesome. Good news. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Elizabeth, I have a question.
Yes.
Maybe if, if possible, at the next meeting, not the study, but the regular meeting. If you, I know we've looked at the graph before of the projected fund balance as it goes out a few years.
Yes.
And it definitely declines in a rather scary and dramatic fashion.
Yes, by year four, it's scary and dramatic. Yes.
Very, very much. Maybe if we could look at that again, just to revisit, just to see if it's still in that downward trend and, and at that pace.
Sure, I can do that. And I will be working on year-end closing in the next month. And so I hopefully will have a report on that in, at the October meeting also, on where we actually are landing in two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mm-huh.
So we would need then a motion to approve the fiscal and accounts payable portion of the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the fiscal and accounts payable and payroll as presented on the agenda.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, Michelle, superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. Couple things. As you guys know, we have a flow chart for our test to stay in learning for COVID, and it's presenting some opportunities and challenges. The reason for the test to stay protocols are so that we don't have to shut down a whole building or a classroom. So as you know, we've had some, a lot of testing occurring. Our two hires thankfully are from an OSPI grant, as well as ESAR and CARES. So it's a one-year position for Jeanette Elliott and Jennifer Root. So we're really excited to get them in place to help and assist with family liaison contact because right now it's our school nurses, our admin assistants, and our team, our leadership team doing the calling and testing. So it's taking up a lot of time. There are pros and cons. The, the, the con to all of this is unfortunately, when we have a threshold of positives, then we have to shut down a classroom. So we work closely with the Department of Health, and that was the case this week. Was it this week? Yeah, it is this week. So actually, the end of last week, we unfortunately had to shut down a first-grade classroom. But the test to stay protocols do work. In fact, we were able to keep a, the sixth grade graders in person and avoid a sixth grade shutdown, as well as a fifth grade and two other teams that we had been working with at the high school. So it's a lot of time, but the alternative is if we don't continue with the test to stay instruction and activities is that we do run the risk of having to shut down an entire building. So again, it's, it's a process. I was able to get on the horn with OSPI last week. I got thirty minutes of their time. I got to talk to Michaela Miller, and I spoke to her again today. A lot of schools haven't even got the test to stay protocol up and running across the state of Washington. They're still trying to navigate it. So they're just sending kids home and shutting down classrooms. We've seen stories now of, across the state, in Washington, whole school buildings just shutting down when they have more than three, in some cases, five positive cases. So we're trying really hard not to do that. We really want to keep in-person learning. We know it puts a toll on everyone in the system, on families, on students, on our staff, and our, and our team. So we're continuing to work with OSPI to flush that out a little bit. And I feel like they're doing a really good job of listening, just to get thirty minutes with Michaela was great, and then I got ten more minutes with her today. So it was great to just kind of review that. They did put out a new bulletin released yesterday, yesterday? On the twenty-second, sorry, it's not yesterday. And it really talks about all of our different layers of if we do have to shut down. One of the things I, I'm pushing on at the state level is to really be thinking about, not an all or none, but if we have to even go hybrid again, it's better than a full school closure. And so our team is really working on what that plan looks like. They're working with their building staff and really looking at having that in place. So if we do have to go hybrid again, it's better than closing a whole building down for two weeks. So those are the things that we are continuing to talk about. We're hoping to have with our COVID liaison positions in place. I know Anna Marie met with them today, so we're getting them in as quick as possible. What that will do is it'll allow us to open up morning and evening sessions. So our staff would have testing clinics open to staff, and we would set those in place now that we have people to run them. And then we would do that for families too. So a drive-up testing or a testing clinic for family, families. What's happening with KVH is we are, Cleo is one of the highest incident rates in Kitata County right now, and so we're really feeling that in our schools. And with that, KVH is backed up on their testing results, so they're not getting test results back for four or five days. So the advantage of doing testing is that we have it. It's just our capacity to continue to do it. So bringing on two more people to help, I think, will be greatly appreciated by families and staff to keep our kids in school. And that's our ultimate goal, is to keep our kids healthy and in school. So we're going to continue to work on that. We're also looking for an evening session sometime next week, hopefully where we can do a community Zoom, invite our families to ask questions. This is not easy to understand. Some days I feel like I have a really good grasp on it, and then something changes, and I really don't. And I'm in the know every day. So I know it's very complicated messaging, and you know, if your, if your kid is vaccinated or not vaccinated, or they were direct contact or indirect contact with somebody positive who was symptomatic versus asymptomatic, it's pretty complex to understand all those nuances of the test to stay in person learning. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. Hopefully, we'll be putting something out with a community forum again to go through the flow chart. Also, in talking to the state, it sounds like they're going to be modifying the flow chart. They're taking it out of the California Test to Stay Program for California schools. Oregon is also looking at adopting it. So I think that that's something that we'll see come our way in the next week or two. But my fingers are not crossed, and we'll also see that, but there might be some changes in that. So I just wanted to give you an update. The good news is our kids are in person. There's some amazing things happening all across our schools. Just laughter again, right? To see kids laughing and engaging, and it's just, it's fun. And our staff are able to embrace those kids and do such a good job pivoting if we have to pivot. So everyone's been tremendous, and we couldn't do this without just everyone chipping in. So, um, a couple of things coming up. It's homecoming week, so, so it's pretty busy at the high school. They are set to play this week, or fingers crossed, everything will work out for that. And hallways are decorated, and every evening there's an activity. So it is full-on homecoming week, and it's good to see those activities again for our kids to be able to feel normal again, to have school activities. I have three kids who have applied to be on the school board. We have two seniors and a junior. And so I'm looking for one of you that wouldn't mind meeting with all three of them and interviewing them, similar to what we did two years ago with our student board reps, and then be able to bring that back to the school board and make a recommendation for two positions or keep all three. So if you are interested, please let me know. I would love to have you meet these amazing students who filled out the application, and they're excited to bring student voice to our decision-making as a district. I think that's it. That's all I got.
Oops, sorry. Any other, any other board comments?
No, I'm excited that the school population has grown. Cool.
Yes. If there's nothing else, I guess we would just need a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'm, make a motion for us to adjourn.
I second it. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.